All right, a call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Monday, October 12th, 2015, and we'll start with roll call.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seebolt-Wilson?
Here.
Mike Dunn?
Here.
Barbara Dos has been excused. And Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
First item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First item is council minutes from September 10th and September 22nd, two separate meetings, one is a special meeting, one is a regular meeting. B is payment of bills, they're in the packet, also financial report in the packet. Appointments to boards and commissions, I have three appointments this evening to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term, Tom Young, and also a three-year term, Mary Rosemeyer, and to the Police and Fire Commission to fill a term that expires in 2017, Mike DeLecky. Licenses, one-year or two-year operator licenses, also in your packet, and permits, a walk permit for family advocates for Domestic Violence Awareness Week on October 20th, and a run permit, Tricor Insurance, Thursday Child, Thursday's Child, Inc., for a Jingle Bell Run on December 5th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Eileen? motion to approve.
I just wanted to point out, there's one other minutes on these documents, the 29th, or did you say that?
No, that actually, they were not included on this particular packet, we will approve those next time, but thank you for mentioning that.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second? Did someone second the motion?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. So was it now that had the motion?
A motion to approve and a second, right. As it is. So we'll vote.
Now?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nichols? Don't move.
If you're calling my name, yes.
Seebolt-Wilson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hit my...
Oh, next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, and the first one this evening is Kendall Welch to speak about Mineral Street Community Garden update, and if you will come to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Kendall Welch, and I live at 87 East Main, here in town. I wanted to start by just passing around a packet with some photos of the progress from the community garden. So at first, I would like to express my gratitude for the council's approval of the Mineral Street Community Garden project last May. So I'd just like to give you an update on our progress. This year, we used gardener dues and fundraised money to build four eight-by-four garden plots and a compost bin at 160 East Mineral. The compost bin was built in collaboration with the Campus Green Project of UWP, and we also hosted some community tai chi events in the park that was open to the public, and we did not have issues with weeds this year because we used a three-layer, three-inch layer of mulch around the garden beds. That's just kind of some of the projects that we've been doing. As this was created to be a community project and remains as such, I would like to read some brief quotes that I collected from the gardeners and neighbors to illustrate some of the community members' reactions to the community garden. Laura Grotchen, one of our gardeners, said, "I am new to gardening, and I've learned so much through the community garden project, plus taking home fresh produce was a wonderful perk." Giselle Varejantos, another one of our gardeners, said, "This garden has served as such a positive and productive outlet for me. I've been able to fulfill, fill my free time with creativity and use the knowledge for gardening I gained throughout the years. I've never felt like an engaged member of the community until this garden was established." Sarah Allen said, "As someone who lives in an apartment, it was nice to have access to a garden plot. It's emotionally rewarding to be able to dig in the dirt. As a low-income, single parent, it was also financially helpful to have the ability to grow some of my own food this summer. It was also a fun way for me and my daughter to learn how to grow our own food, and we both came away with a sense of pride in our work and a new appreciation for fresh food." And last, Tracy Roberts, one of the neighbors to the garden, said, "We can see the garden from our house and are so pleased to see a beautiful garden in that spot. It should be extended, and that property should be added to the existing Jenner Park for all to enjoy." So Tracy's comment brings me to a request I have to put on the agenda for the future in the council. Our request is to use the site again next year and to expand modestly by adding a couple more ingrown plots. I hope that the Common Council will see that the project has been beneficial in engaging members of the Platteville community and a healthy activity, and will support this positive impact by allowing us to continue in 2016. So I guess I just wanted to bring that up as a discussion, and possibly in the future you guys would be interested in allowing us to continue in 2016. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad that it was a successful project.
Should I sit back down, then? Okay.
Thanks, Kendall.
Kendall, would you, would you like those back, so you have them?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate what you've done.
The other two requests we have to speak is for an item later, so I'll call on both of you then, okay? Under reports, we have, first of all, the Farnight Animal Care Trust Fund Committee, Seebolt-Wilson?
Nothing to add.
Commission on Aging, Killian?
No addition.
Land Commission, Dunn or Nichols?
Nothing.
Nothing for me either. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation, Seebolt-Wilson?
Nothing to add.
Community Safe Routes?
Nothing to add.
Museum Board, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Library Board, I have nothing to add to that, and Police and Fire Commission, Dunn?
Just one, one thing. Our officers and their staff are working real hard at trying to make biking safer. They've been making a lot of stops and talking to people and explaining some of the things, so they've been working really hard at that, so it's definitely needed here in this community.
Okay. Other reports in our packet included the Water and Sewer Financial Report for September, the Airport Financial Report for September, City Attorney Itemized Statement, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those? Seeing none, we'll go on to the action item, which is purchase of the former Pioneer Ford Properties. Not sure which staff person...
I think Joe's gonna...
I'll take that. Well, we've talked about this before, the city's previously submitted the offer to purchase for the former Pioneer Ford Properties, well as a couple of adjacent properties that are listed in your report, 75 South Oak Street, 70 West Water Street, no, that's 70 South Water Street, 50 South Water Street, 45 South Oak Street, and 70 South Oak Street. The offer that was submitted was for $982,426. As you recall, we had some contingencies in that original offer to purchase. The first one of significance was that we were successful in obtaining some grant funds that would assist us with the acquisition and redevelopment of those properties. We have been successful with that, we received $150,000, or up to $150,000 site assessment grant, and that we're already using to help with the environmental assessment of those properties. Heers Associates has been working on that, and they reported last meeting that basically there are no significant issues with the properties that would prevent us from moving forward. There were some minor environmental items, but it was nothing that was surprise, we kind of knew about and expected, the asbestos in the buildings, some lead-based paint, a little bit of issues from some onsite storage tanks and from the dry cleaner, but nothing out of the ordinary for that type of a property. So that was good news. The other grant that we received the award was a community development block grant, excuse me, that's for up to $500,000, and that would assist with the acquisition of the properties and also the building demolition. So we're moving forward with that. And as I mentioned, the other big contingency was the environmental analysis, so that came back with some good news. Right now, the offer is that we would make a decision to purchase or not purchase by October 28th of this fall, based on some requests from the seller. We've modified the offer to purchase document with an amendment regarding the list price of each property individually, that's so they can do an exchange and some other activities to lessen the impact for their taxes, which really doesn't have an impact on us. The timing of the sale will be a little bit different because there, some of it we're going to purchase on that closing date, and other one will essentially be like a land contract?
Land contract.
So that, you know, some of that purchase will technically carry over to next year for their taxes, so again, it would benefit them, and it wouldn't really have any negative impact on the city. The other thing that I would like to add regarding that closing date, we are currently working through the requirements for the grants, particularly the community development block grant. There are quite a few rules and regulations that are applicable to acquisition of properties. Some of the items technically we should have been working on before we started negotiations, but obviously, we can't do that now, so we're working backwards, but one of the items that the state has to make a decision on is whether or not it's considered a voluntary acquisition or an involuntary acquisition. Even though it was for sale for two years, it should be apparent, but under federal rules, it's not quite that easy. So depending on which direction we get as far as that decision, it may impact some of the items that we have to take care of, and that could have an impact on the closing date. So it could be a realistic possibility that we may need to delay the closing on that until we take care of some of those items. So at this point, you know, the October 28th is what we're shooting for as far as a target date to make that final acquisition, but it is possible that date could be delayed. We've informed the seller of that, and at this point, they are agreeable to that delay if needed. So I guess if you proceed with the vote tonight to purchase the properties, it should be under the assumption that that date might have to adjust a little bit. So if that can be part of your motion, I don't know how you want to word that, but that would be great, if we've got a little bit of flexibility on the actual closing. And then I would say if there's anything else that comes up through this process of meeting the requirements that is more substantial, that impacts, you know, beyond a minor delay, or for instance, it could be something that impacts the sale price, then obviously, we'd bring that back to the council for further action before we commence the closing. So other than that, it appears that, you know, the contingencies have been met, and as I said, we're working through the other requirements, so staff would recommend approval of moving forward with this acquisition. Any questions?
Joe, what's, what's the latest indication that you would have for a closing date? Are we looking next year? Possibly, because of the, what the state has to decide?
No, I think to meet their requirements, it's still going to be this fall.
Okay.
I just don't think, if they come back with an answer, it's got to be, you know, we have to do an appraisal, and we have to do this and that, that's going to delay things, and I don't think we'd be able to get that done by October 28th, but I would see November at the latest, the early December closing.
Is there...
Anything beyond that, like I said, or anything more substantial, we'd come back for additional guidance from the council.
If no more discussion, anybody?
Well, I ju- just for clarification's sake, Joe, basically, what we're saying is, the question is to approve the acquisition of the properties subject to the contingencies that we have in the offer to purchase, would that be a fair assessment? Since we're looking at the grant, community development block grant yet?
Well, we are looking at that grant. I would say that the, that the motion would be to authorize staff to proceed to close this transaction, and if necessary, execute documents to extend the closing date to, and then pick like the first week in December. And if there's any other substantive changes beyond extending the closing date that need to be made, that staff would be required to come back to council to present that information and get it approved.
All right, who would like to make that motion?
Well, I'll try, okay? I'd like to make a motion that the council approve the acquisition of the properties listed above and allow staff to proceed with finalizing the documents necessary for the transaction, with the understanding that the date and other details of the acquisition may need to be modified, and maybe if we extend the date to, beyond December 1st closing date, closing date, that staff will bring it back to us at that time?
And, and beyond any, any other changes would need to come back to the council?
Beyond any...
Other than extension of closing on or before December 1?
And any other changes would have to also be brought back to the council on before December 1?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We'll vote.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seebolt-Wilson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That is the only action item we have this evening, the rest of this is information and discussion, and the first item is professional service agreement for job classification study. Karen?
So this is a carryover from our work session earlier this evening. This is a proposal for a contract with a consulting firm to do a job analysis and classification study. They would evaluate the job content for all of our city positions using standardized criteria, and at the end, we would have a new uniform compensation system that would then be, we would have to implement over a series of years due to market considerations. Also, part of that would be a review of overtime status and compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, and proposal or recommendations with respect to how we maintain our compensation structure moving forward. And the cost of this proposal is $10,000. It would be paid for from the 2015 merit budget for employees. There is also the option to do a market classification study during 2016, and I anticipate that'll be something we talk about during the budget process.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All right, this will be on for action next time. Okay, thanks. Next item is renaming the Roundtree Branch Trail, the David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail, and we do have Jean Weber and Chris Wright here to speak on that. I don't know if you both want to speak, or one of you at least needs to come to the microphone. You heard that. And if you would please give your name and address.
Jean Weber, 1285 Union Street?
Chris Wright, 910 Seamer Street?
First, I'd like to thank the council for your leadership, as for your, your part in the leadership team of the Moving Platteville Outdoors Project, and also share with you as a result of your $285,000 pledge, MPO will be naming a trail section after the City of Platteville. The purpose for Chris and I being here tonight is to answer any questions that you may have regarding the MPO PCA request to rename the trail, the David Canny Roundtree Branch Trail. Depending on the Canny family preferences, Doc, Doctor, or a middle initial P may be included in that name. And just one comment, at the parade Saturday, folks were approaching us on how David would start conversations with, I had this dream last night, and then proceed with another new idea for Platteville. I can't tell you how many times Chris Wright and I heard that from David Canny. Tonight, though, we provided you a write-up on David, so as opposed to having Chris read that, we are prepared to simply answer any questions you may have this evening.
Could you guys give us a quick update on the status of the pavement of the trail? I saw that it was paved down by the Marquee Avenue. That's pretty cool.
That is pretty cool. I haven't even seen that bit myself yet. The trail is paved, is, is blacktopped all the way from the Mineral Street Bridge, all the way out to behind Menards, and most of the concrete has been put in, not all, but most, under every bridge. Katie's Garden was completed late, late last week.
That's the section I meant, I'm sorry, it was the Katie's Garden section.
Oh, okay. So I think that brings you up to date on the concrete. Over half the light pole bases have already been put in, and candidly, the construction of the trail is proceeding at a faster rate than we had even hoped. So let's hope for good weather, and hopefully, a lot will get done yet this fall. I think as you're all aware, though, by contract, they do not have to complete it until the end of August of 2016. Any other questions on that?
When Jean, I just happened to glance at this, and I saw that it's so bypass stairs, were we not able to get around that, get away from that part?
Well, we're gonna bypass the stairs, we're gonna eliminate the stairs.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant a bypass stairs.
No.
Okay, so you did get rid of them?
Absolutely, they're gone. It's a little hard to bike upstairs.
Yeah, thank you, I was hoping you were able to, but I just glanced at that, so...
Yeah.
So basically, the request that you would come back with for action next time would be that the trail be named, that David, either Pete Canny or Dr. Canny or Doc Canny Roundtree Branch Trail?
Exactly.
And obviously, he was very instrumental, this was his...
This was David's vision. Candidly, long before PCA ever started, David Canny had shared with Chris Wright and other folks that the vision was to pave and light the trail. So it's...
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Just one more point of clarification, I guess we talked about this at the Parks and Rec Committee, or Safe Routes, I can't remember which, but when you're saying the trail segment, you mean from, basically from campus to Walmart, that full trail is what you would like to rename in honor of David P. Canny?
Yeah, it's from the Marquee Turnabout, the bridge right there at the roundabout.
Yep.
All the way out to where the Platteville to Belmont Trail will start, which is at the Second Railroad Bridge, if you're going out east on the trail, and it's directly behind Menards down the hill.
And then there's segments of the trail that come off of it that would be named other things, and that's what you're referencing before? Okay.
Yeah, there could be, yeah, there's several trails that do come off of the main trail, but we're only talking about that one section.
Thank you.
The section that Mike has the map in front of him, so...
Other questions?
You gonna have any signage, bulletins, whatever you want to call them, out along the trail, explaining the work that has gone into this trail as far as the people that have contributed to it?
Absolutely, there will be a...
I'm talking about large signage.
Yeah, there's going to be kiosks, Ken, at both ends of the trail, and at the entrance kiosk, there will be a, the, the MPO story, so to speak, which will really recognize as good as we can all those that have helped in leadership, or fundraising, or donated anything, whether it was cash or in-kind labor, et cetera. Really, I think we all recognize this has been a phenomenal collaborated community effort, and it's a good story to tell for people that are visiting Platteville, as well as for people to follow us. Again, thank you, thank you folks for your part in this thing. If you went to start it, we couldn't have helped finish it.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Chris?
Next item is request for Platteville Housing Authority jurisdiction change, and we have two people asking to speak on this. One is Jen Weber, and the other one is Marilyn Gottschalk. Actually, Marilyn is registering in favor, she's not speaking.
So thanks for seeing me tonight.
Yeah, Jen, if you just want to introduce yourself, just because we record it, so...
Okay, my name is Jennifer Weber, and I live at 200 Preston Drive. And just to give a brief overview of the program, we're a HUD-funded program, and we have an annual budget of about $374,125 right now. We have 128 vouchers to assist low-income and extremely low-income Platteville residents. The program is administered by the Executive Director and the Board of Commissioners, and we used to be entirely supported by the City of Platteville, so our original jurisdiction and things like that were set back when we were a city entity. We're now strictly administered by HUD, and we continuously undergo budget cuts. So I'm here tonight to ask if you guys will let us expand beyond the City of Platteville limits. That's what, as in the letter that I presented you guys with, it'll allow for lower rents, and families wouldn't have to compete as much with college rental rates, and the more families that I can assist, or the less I spend per family, the more I could assist.
Question?
I have one for you. On the voucher portion of the, you have actually two ways, you can have apartments that are HUD-certified that people can rent, correct, and you have a voucher that goes to the actual individual, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, when a person stays at a specific location for 12 months, they can take that voucher and go anywhere they want to, is that correct?
They are allowed to port with their voucher, they can, porting is also considered moving even within the town, but yes, they can port to another voucher program as long as they've been in good standing and not a violator of the program.
Now, do they actually physically take that voucher with them, so you are reduced by one each time somebody takes one?
Well, they take the voucher with them, their assistance goes with, and we can either be billed, or the other receiving housing authority can administer that person, so if they administer them and they pay for the family themselves, then we still have our voucher, but if it goes with them, then our funding is tied up with that family or individual.
For indefinitely?
It is indefinite.
After a year's time goes by when you rebudget, do you get replacement vouchers from the federal government, since they don't, they aren't real good at giving money back right now?
No, but we do still get credit for that family, even if they're not in our jurisdiction, so we still get funding based on that head count. So they would still count as a program participant of the Platteville Housing Authority.
Okay, so then you would have money to reissue, can you reissue another voucher then, with that money, or...
Well, no, the money is tied up with them until the receiving housing authority will absorb them, but what I'm saying is that when HUD looks at our funding, then they look at the head count, so they give us so much per family and then a percent increase, so we would still get funding based on that family, but it would be tied up with that family. And it can be indefinite, but usually, the receiving housing authority does absorb them in time, I think I've had maybe up to six months at the most.
Okay, because I do know that, that's an issue that's going on here now.
Yeah, and there's not a lot that governs porting, they're getting better at it, getting some regulations on that, but yeah, it's...
Because I worry about you, things continue, because our waiting period here is a lot less than it is in other communities and other places, so you see it, you've seen a big influx for that reason, and I worry about lots of our vouchers leaving and not having more to utilize.
Actually, it's pretty rare, I mean, people can exercise the right to port, but I usually get a few a year.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm, and sometimes they port to that area, and they either get absorbed, or they don't do, they don't lease up on that end, so they just simply go off the program, and that's something that we can use in the community. So right now, I have no ports that I'm paying for at all.
That's excellent.
So yeah, it's just a few a year, it's not, it's as huge of a thing as you would think, but they do have that right. So, yeah, it's just a few a year, it's not a, it's as huge of a thing as you would think, but they do have that right.
I have a question too. So if you expand to the entire zip code, does your budget go up, 'cause does your head count of service area go up? Like, does HUD give you more money if you have more service area?
No, it's based on the number of families or participants that I'm servicing. So my point is that they would pay lower amounts, so I would pay less per family, and that's more that I could assist, because rents outside of the city limits, even just right outside, are a lot lower. And they don't compete.
Uh, can you say that again more slowly, I'm having a hard time with that one. So it's based upon the number you're servicing, so your number of servicing would go up, though?
Well, yeah, it, yeah, that's the goal. Right now, I have a hundred, well, I have a hundred and twenty-eight vouchers that I can lease up in total, and right now I have about a hundred and three. But, yeah, it would be more that I could stretch the budget, so I'm at about an eighty percent lease-up rate right now, and I could potentially use up more of my vouchers.
Okay.
Instead of only, you know, helping a hundred and three, a hundred and five, I could maybe help a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty.
You'd have access to more people. And that would increase your budget, or wouldn't?
It would, the more I have, yep, I get, yep, I get funding.
Okay, so if your service area expanded, your budget would expand as well?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to.
If the goal, yeah, the goal ensues of being able to lease up more families by spending less. Not that I would spend li- I mean, a lot are still gonna stay in town, but it gives them that option, it's not necessarily going to be promoted, but it, it'll change things for people that are on the waiting list outside of city limits too. Because my waiting list ha- it's set up by preferences, so the City of Platteville, families, elderly, disabled, in Platteville get serviced first. And right now, I have people right outside of city limits that are lumped in with my county applicants. So they could be right, you know, literally right on the outside of city limits, and they're waiting way longer than someone that's in town.
Another question for you, does the voucher have a specific set amount of money?
It does, it, it's.
Do you have a maximum, or could you?
Yep, the maximum is for a four-bedroom, and that's a thousand eighty-six, so that's the max that I could assist a family with, um, for rent and utilities, for a gross rent.
Now then, if you were to expand outside of the grant, uh, outside of the city limits, and you found some rent for a four-bedroom that was five hundred dollars, would you have, could you actually then use the additional five hundred for somebody else, or you can't, how do you?
Yep, it's all in the same housing assistance payment budget, so it's all in my HAP funding, which is the amount of subsidy I can help with families, so it's all lumped together, so anything, any lesser amount that I'm spending on someone will be used somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Well, if you think of any between now and our next meeting, you can get them to me, and we'll get Jennifer to hopefully give us some answers before the next meeting, because this will be on for action as well, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I didn't say so, Marilyn's registering in favor. Next item is the City Manager's Proposed Twenty-Sixteen Budget.
Very exciting, we have another PowerPoint this evening. While I get to stand up here and, uh, take the glory associated with the budget, this is really the work of a lot of individuals, and I want to acknowledge Valerie Martin, our lead budgeteer, uh, her able assistant, Dwayne Borgan, and all the department heads that worked really hard to put together their budget proposals. Uh, in terms of, just to recap for folks that haven't been following along, um, we have been in the budget process for a little while yet, for, for a while yet, I should say. Started on August thirteenth, when, uh, we had a council review session of our budget themes and goals. Uh, then on September twenty-ninth, we had a work session on our CIP requests. And then tonight, you're gonna, uh, you just got your first copy of the City Manager's Proposed Budget. We won't talk a lot about that, except for the introduction that I'm gonna give to you tonight. But instead, we'll go through it in a, a considerable detail, uh, at council work sessions on October twentieth and twenty-sixth. And then our, uh, proposed schedule has the, uh, public hearing presentation on November seventeenth, and then the public hearing, uh, for the budget itself on November twenty-fourth. Uh, so I know the council's seen this a few times, but not everyone of the public has, uh, uh, had a chance to see our budget themes and principles. And so just to start off with our guiding principles, now the first one was growing prosperity within the community. And so these are the things that aren't necessarily goals, but there are things that we are keeping in the back of our mind throughout all of the work that we're doing as, uh, elected officials and city staff. Uh, the second one was fostering good relationships with public and private partners, incentivizing private efforts to try and advance our long-term goals, promoting unique development places, events, and activities, and then using the talents of our staff through participative decision-making. With respect to specific themes and goals, uh, we had identified Revitalize as one of our themes. And there we had as goals, completing the library block project, identifying a developer for the Pioneer Ford property, which we talked about earlier this evening, developing a program to support the conversion of single-family homes from rental to owner-occupied. And then lastly, exploring a future referendum for City Hall and fire station building needs. And you will note that that was a change from our previous goal, based on the feedback that the council gave at the last work session. Our next theme is educate and enforce. Here you'll notice goals related to developing an education campaign related to code enforcement issues, identifying community resources to assist with low or fixed-income residents with respect to code compliance, reinstituting ongoing proactive code enforcement, and reviewing our residential parking permit, parking permit program efficacy, try and say that three times. Our third theme was inspire, really about how do we communicate with our residents about what's going on in our community, and what we're doing as a city. Um, and under this one, we talked about creating a branding strategy and key messages, developing a new website, and developing a new city newsletter. And then finally, the last theme, which was more internally focused, we called Support. These are the things that we would be doing, uh, to really, uh, increase our effectiveness as an organization, uh, that would then lead to us being more effective in our other goals and responsibilities. And there we had continuing our IT upgrades, creating a formal compensation plan for staff, and, uh, instituting a consistent new hire process. So with respect to the budget, and I, I'm sure I don't have to tell you this, that it's all, it's really a delicate balancing act. Um, we know we have to maintain our streets, our buildings, our equipment, and our other physical infrastructure. We also have our compensation and benefits for our staff. Really, we've got physical capital, they're our human capital, and because we're a service organization, they're very important and critical to our success. And then lastly, uh, we wanna be doing new initiatives, um, to advance our community. And we know that new initiatives are important, because cities, like everything else, compete. And we compete for resources, we compete for employers and jobs, and we compete for residents. Um, and again, as you already know, having worked with this budget for a while, um, it's challenging to fund new initiatives, um, given some of the restraints that we operate under, uh, with levy limits and expenditure restraints. And so the proposed budget, we've tried to find, uh, the best balance we could, in terms of really being able to, maintain our, our physical capital, have a, a respectable, uh, package for our employees, and then, uh, to also be able to fund some initiatives to advance our community specifically related to the goals that I identified earlier. So first I'm gonna talk about capital projects. Um, so for folks that don't know, uh, capital projects typically cost more than ten thousand dollars, and they're less routine in nature, and so they're funded differently. Uh, our proposed budget allocates, uh, just over three million dollars to capital projects. That was, um, less than what had been in our wish list that we discussed on the twenty-ninth. Uh, the street reconstruction and fire truck are financed through debt. And you see the debt number there as being one million, six hundred and eighty-four, um, dollars. The proposed budget honors the city's, uh, financial policy of limiting debt to three-point-five percent of the city's equalized valuation. With the proposed borrowing, our anticipated debt would be seventy-nine percent of the city's debt cap, which is lower than the state's debt cap, and then fifty-five percent of the state's debt capped. I would note that, uh, any borrowing that would need to be done with respect to the library block or, um, the Pioneer Ford are not included in these numbers, though, so that would, that would raise the, uh, the numbers we just talked about. I would also note that, um, only four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was captured from the general fund to support the CIP. That's lower than past years, and, um, that, that's not good. We'd like to see more money coming from the general fund to support our CIP. But as we talk more about the operating budget in a few minutes, uh, I think you'll be able to see why we weren't able to capture more. So with respect to capital projects, um, in terms of what's in the City Manager's Proposed Budget, uh, we have replacing the fire engine, number nine. Street repairs in the projects that are listed to the right there, Bonson Street, Richard, Short, Cedar, and Furnace. Two-point-five-ton dump truck, leaf vacuum, nine-one-one software, highway striping, Parks Tractor, Harrison Playground, and website, and those are roughly in list of cost. And so those are the items that we included in this CIP. There were some items that are included in this CIP, but they are financed primarily through outside revenue sources. And that includes the library furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, the airport hangar, the airport hangar terminal and hangar roof, the Harrison sand volleyball, uh, courts, and the taxi van. Not proposed from the wish list that you reviewed earlier would be the City Hall remodel, fire department command vehicle, fire inspector vehicle, museum landscaping, museum elevator, street reconstruction for Mason, Barrett's, and De Valera, did I say that right?
De Valera, yeah, that's fine.
Business one fifty-one pedestrian improvements and museum accessible doors. In terms of the levy limit structure, I know this was a slide that Valerie had, uh, shared last year as part of her budget presentation, but we do have some pretty strict levy limits here in the state of Wisconsin. Municipalities are allowed to increase their operational levy by the amount of the net new construction only. And net new construction is growth in tax, tax base, it's due to new construction minus demolition. Um, and so in simple terms, no new construction means no levy increase. And in two thousand fifteen, the new, net new construction was point seven-nine-six percent, and that led us to an allowable tax levy increase of just thirty-one thousand dollars. Just over thirty-one thousand dollars. The other factor that we're dealing with is expenditure restraint, and, um, that's basically aid that comes to us if we follow certain, um, qualifications with respect to our expenditure. And the formula is up there, if anyone's interested. But that really leads us to, um, these numbers for two thousand sixteen, and again, uh, you can see how we compare with previous years, but in two thousand sixteen, we have just point eight percent in terms of a levy limit increase. And in terms of allowable increase for the expenditure restraint, it was pretty close to the same. And that's, um, lower than what we've seen in previous years, and that led to the challenges with respect to being able to carry forward funds from the general fund to the capital. So with respect to the proposed operating budget, um, you can then also see how it compares to previous years. Um, just over eight million dollars at eight-two-zero-two-seven-zero-six. It's actually a one percent decrease, um, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. Uh, and that's, uh, partially due to the loss of the ambulance, the transition of the ambulance service over to Southwest Health in term, and our expenses going down. So when you look at the operating budget, um, I've outlined, uh, a few of the significant changes. There are a few more that, uh, are in there as well, but these would be the larger ticket items. We do have a proposed salary increase of one percent, that would be effective January first. And the equivalent of one percent effective July first, we would set aside, uh, to start funding potential salary changes, um, that may be identified through the compensation study. In total, the one percent in January first, and the one percent in July first would be equivalent to what is in our current union contract for two thousand sixteen for the police officers. Our health insurance premiums are budgeted to increase ten percent, we don't actually know the number on that. There, um, has been some potential last-minute changes to the Affordable Care Act, um, that may lead, uh, the rates to change. And that means the carriers are behind in terms of getting the numbers back to us. We do have a slight increase in part-time hours in the budget at the museum and library. The library is just for, uh, after the new facility opens. So it wouldn't, uh, take effect until October of next year. There's also a slight increase for technology and education and marketing. And there is an added contingency line item of fifteen thousand in the budget, which I personally believe is important for any organization of our size to have some contingency funds set aside for unexpected expenses, but that isn't, I think it's something that existed here at one time, and then, um, was cut in recent years. So again, just to remind folks of the calendar, um, we still have a lot of process to go. We've got those two work sessions coming up on October twentieth and twenty-sixth. And at that time, we'll go through more detailed questions, you've got the budget now, uh, that you can review. We would ask that if you come up with questions as you're going through the budget, it may be helpful to get those questions to staff in advance of the work sessions, so that we can come prepared and you can make the most effective use of your time as possible.
Questions, anyone? All right, looks like we'll see you October twentieth. Next item is Contract fourteen-fifteen, Snow and Ice Removal.
Okay. Thank you. Every year, the city contracts the removal of snow and ice in front of those properties that do not clear the walks themselves. This charge, plus a twenty-dollar administrative fee, is billed to the property owner. We provided bid packages to five firms who have worked with the city before, and we received two bids. Four Seasons Landscaping bid twenty cents per square foot, or forty-dollar minimum for snow only, with no changes to the bid specifications. Southwest Lawn Care bid eighteen-point-nine cents per square foot, or thirty-eight-seventy-five minimum for snow only, with changes to the bid specifications. A summary of those statements is as, or of those proposed changes is, as follows. They propose to start thirty-six hours after the snowfall ends, where current specifications are to start when directed by Public Works. They propose to start between the hours of seven AM and five PM any day of the week. Current specifications are to start work the first working day after being given notice to do so, and that shoveling will only start Monday through Friday. Subparagraph two is changed to allow work seven days a week. Current specifications are that shoveling will start Monday through Friday. Saturday may, may be used to complete work which had been started previously on the Friday. And no work would be permitted on Sunday, under the current specifications. There is a subparagraph that is proposed to be eliminated. The current specifications are that if another snowfall should begin while a clearing is underway, work shall cease immediately and not be allowed to commence until permission is again granted by Public Works. And, and they're proposing that that subparagraph be eliminated. I've included copies of the bid documents by, uh, Four Seasons and Southwest Lawn Care, and, uh, the complete bid package that was sent out to everyone. Last year, the contract price was twenty cents a square foot, uh, with minimum forty dollars for snow only, twenty-five cents a square foot with minimum fifty dollars for ice and packed snow. Council has the following options. They can reject the Southwest Lawn Care's bid as unresponsive and award to Four Seasons. And the council has the option to direct changes to bid specifications for future years, if you wish to do so. The second option would be to reject both bids and direct staff to re-bid contract with new specifications. If you decide to do that, I've proposed a timeline, or, or expl- explained a timeline here. If you determine by a consensus tonight that the bids are likely to be rejected next time, you could direct staff to re-bid the contract immediately with modifications, as suggested by Southwest Lawn Care. We would put the public notices in, in the paper with a bid opening on November. We would put the public notices in the paper with a bid opening on November 3rd. The council would have to formally reject both bids on October 27th. We would open the bids on November 3rd. Council would award the bid on November 24th, and then we would sign the contract thereafter. The only concern that we would have is if there was a snowfall prior to the council awarding the bid, we would have to work out some sort of a special arrangement. The third option would require, would ask that you, as the council, waive any informalities and accept the Southwest Lawn Care bid with the modifications proposed because its bid is deemed most advantageous to the city. Those quotes are from the proposal document. The city attorney notes that there's some legal risk to that, and I would let him explain in more detail what those potential items are.
The legal risk is around, is in the nature of when you waive informalities and decide to accept a bid that is not exactly the same as what you requested bids on, you're making a judgment that the changes made or the irregularities in the bid are so minor that they really don't involve changing the terms of the contract or the specifications for which bids were solicited. And we look at the kinds of things that are changed in the bid proposal that was submitted that, by Southwest, and you see that the changes that they've made are really, they bid on a project that we did not ask for a bid on, and when you accept that bid, but you don't let anyone else that's bid have an opportunity to bid on those terms, then that affects the integrity of the bidding process and makes it unfair. And staff has looked at what has happened here and has, I think we agree that the changes that were made are material and should be made only in the context of specifications. If that's what you want bids to bid on, then we need to change the specs and rebid it. Otherwise, I think the safe course is to either, well, if you don't want to change the bidding specs and rebid it, then I think you have to determine that Southwest Lawn Care's bid is not responsive and can be rejected and then award it to Four Seasons.
And this is just on for information this evening, not for action, so.
Did you want, Howard requested consensus.
Right. So the question is whether generally the council feels that it's necessary to rebid or whether we want to go ahead with the bids we have and make a decision on them next week, as I understand it.
Yes, please. That would shorten the timeframe if you decide we need to rebid.
From my point of view of looking at this, every once in a while, I like to look at city ordinances, and then I compare them to contracts that work with that sort of thing. And in this situation, I looked at city ordinance high and low, and the only thing I can get out of the city ordinance is it says that "snow and ice will be removed from city sidewalk 36 hours after a snowfall." It doesn't say anything about not being able to plow snow on Sunday, doesn't say anything about, well, we'll wait, it might be a 40% chance of snow coming in tomorrow, so we won't start now. So now you've got the snowfall not at 36 hours, you could have it at 40, you could have it 50, you could have it 60. It could be, because if it fell on a Saturday, now you can't plow on Sunday, can't do anything on Sunday. And my question to everybody that's here, why do we shovel the sidewalk? Why do we do that? Anybody who have a question? It's for safety, not to make it look good. So it's very imperative to follow the 36 hours that our ordinance states. So that's why these changes, I feel, we should make the changes, rebid it to anybody that wants to come along, doesn't matter how many we have. And that way, it makes it easier for the contractor. When he brings his people in, they're set up to go. If they bring them in and say, oh, no, we're not going to do this for, we'll wait today and see what happens. Well, what if it doesn't happen that day? You've already added another 24 hours on to the problem, and if it's a Saturday, then you have Sunday problem. It's very difficult to remove packed snow, okay? The sooner you get it off the sidewalks, the easier it is, and when a contractor bids one of these contracts, they bid it at a set price. It doesn't matter if it takes them an hour or six hours to remove snow from a certain sidewalk. That's the way it is. So the longer we do this, there's a safety issue of packing it down, making it harder, you've got more time for people to slip and fall. It's, the contractors know when 36 hours are. They know when to come in and do it. They're not going to shade anybody or do anything else, okay? So to wait, get a hold of Howard, okay, say the snow ends, and now we fall into 3 o'clock in the morning, which is 36 hours later, we're going to call, would that contractor call Howard and say, hey, it's 3 o'clock in the morning, but 36 hours are up, what do you do? I don't think we're going to do that, so now it's going to roll over to the next morning. So there's a lot of disparity there in times, and that's a big safety factor. So following our ordinance is the most important thing. We can't make bids out outside of our ordinance because it doesn't make sense, especially when we have those guidelines. If I didn't shovel my sidewalk after the 36 hours and the contractor came in, I say, oh, well, I thought it was going to snow again. I'm still going to get, have to pay for it. There's no roundabout way of doing it. I'm still going to pay. But we're saying to the contractors, no, we're going to wait, make it 50 hours or so before we do it. So those are a lot of issues, and I want to remind everybody, our ordinance says 36 hours, and it doesn't say we have to have Howard's permission or anybody else who would be in charge. I'm not picking on you, Howard, you just happen to be the guy there. But it doesn't, the ordinance doesn't say that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Are we including Sundays on this 36 hours, or is that?
Yes. Seven days a week.
Do you want these folks to go out on prime time to clear sidewalks?
You go out immediately after 36 hours, doesn't matter what time it is, and you clean, because God doesn't tell you it can't snow on Sunday.
I guess my concern with that, Mike, is that if we have a contract, it seems to me someone has to oversee that contract, and that means, to me at least, that parameters are set. And so I think we need a staff person who sets those parameters, and I'm not sure that I am comfortable with the idea of a contractor just going out whenever they think it stops snowing. I think that having direction from staff makes it very clear about when that should be removed. And so I understand you 36 hours, but I also think that if it snows and the contractor goes out and clears that sidewalk, and it snows again 15 minutes later, and they clear it again, that's going to be more expense to the actual property owner.
It is, but our ordinance says 36 hours. It doesn't say 38, 40, or 50, or 18.
I'm going to have the city attorney or Howard respond to that comment.
Go ahead, I just printed it out.
We always, we have what the rule says, and we try to temper rules to be applied to situations so necessarily we exercise, staff exercises discretion to make the rule work. And, you know, if a rule says 36 hours and it doesn't make any difference that it's going to snow 15 minutes later after 36 hours, it would be nice to have a staff member be able to intervene and say, I know what the rule says, but it doesn't make sense here, so we're not going to apply it.
But then you're jeopardizing the safety of the whole community.
Your argument, I give you your argument, but I think it needs to be tempered with common sense.
Right.
That's why I say, big example, 36 hours, okay? So you say it snows a little bit more, and we can't do it, and that's a Saturday, okay? Now we can't do it Sunday, and we have to wait till Monday. The safety issue is a big thing there.
I understand. I'm just saying. It needs to be tempered with common sense.
Both ways.
I'm going to agree that, Mike, it would be great if we can get the sidewalks cleared as quickly as possible. Somebody who walks on the sidewalks, it's nice to have them cleared, but I also really think there's a strength to this argument that we need to be able to have oversight of what a contractor's doing. It's really easy for a contractor to work without oversight and then end up racking up some really large bills for our city, and that worries me a little bit.
I don't disagree with that, but the 36-hour issue I'm talking about now is not when the snow stops. Howard can determine when the snow stops, okay? Now we have 36 hours to clear, okay? He's saying we can't clear on Sundays and that it might snow 40%, you know? So here's the thing, we're not, Howard can determine when it stops snowing, I don't care about that, the staff overseeing, okay? But from that point, it's 36 hours as the ordinance states. Then the contractors go out, okay? I can't help it if it stops and it's 36 hours on Saturday at midnight, the contractors go out. Who cares if it's Sunday? If they don't care, why are you, are we dictating to them they can't plow snow on a Sunday? That's ridiculous.
Except that there's some people who don't work on Sundays, and they say, I'm going to, I know it's snowfall, I know I've got a sidewalk to shovel, it's Friday, I have to work Saturday, but I'll get it on Sunday.
But under Howard's justification, we can't do it on Sunday.
My point.
Just, go ahead.
I guess I would just say that, you know, there can be good arguments made both ways. Ultimately, it's your decision, and we'll follow whatever direction you give us.
And the question really is...
If we have a past practice, we could certainly have the contractor work on Sundays and operate with less staff discretion. That's a valid choice.
But the way the contract was bid, it does state that Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, unless you're finishing a job, you start on Friday. Saturday and Sunday, you would not be, the contractor would not be removing snow. So the question really before us this evening is whether or not we're comfortable with the fact that we got two bids, one of which our city attorney has said materially changed the bid process, therefore it's probably not in the city's best interest to consider that one without allowing, going back and starting the process over and allowing other people to bid in the same way.
And we can just tweak it.
So we need some direction. The council needs to give some direction to staff as to whether or not we want to consider these two bids that have been given to us at the next council meeting, or do we want to instruct staff to go out and bid again?
I recommend we bid again.
I also do that, and I think in the meantime, we can also tweak that a little bit. If you don't want to go all of it, I still think you need to look at safety and eliminate the no-sunday shoveling, for sure, because that falls into a lot of stuff. People work Sundays all over the place, and then if the contractor doesn't want to, that's his option, but it still should be available so they can do it.
You want to include in the bid process that sentence? Is that what you're saying?
Quick, can I interrupt with a question? I'm sorry. Howard, can you refresh me on a technicality? When the contractor goes out, are they the ones that take the photo of the status of the sidewalks with the date and everything as proof?
Yes.
Okay, so that the city already is not the one verifying that that sidewalk needed to be shoveled and it's been 36 hours?
No.
Contractor handles all that?
Yes.
It should be before and after.
City staff, city staff determines, and as Brian mentioned, we sometimes use discretion, but once we make a determination that it's time for the contractor to go out, we contact the contractor and say, you know, it's time, you can go out. A lot of times, what we will do is we will also give them a pre-heads-up. So on a Monday afternoon, we may say, unless it snows overnight, you'll be able to start Tuesday morning, as an example. But we give the contractor the go-ahead to start, you know, on Tuesday morning or Tuesday afternoon or whatever we believe the 36 hours is. At that point, the contractor schedules his people, and they go out, and under the contract, you're correct, they take a before photo with date-time stamp, and then they take an after photo with date-time stamp so that we have the proof that, yes, here's your sidewalk that had snow or snow and ice on it, and here it is after it was cleared. And that's part of the process before they get paid.
And why didn't we not include Sundays?
Well, quite frankly, that was, quite frankly, that was past practice long before I got here. We continued it. Brian has made an argument that could be made, but it's totally up to you. If you decide that that's what you want to change, that's fine.
Thank you.
I think the criticisms for the, I understand what you're saying, Mike, but we live in a town where many people leave Thursday night and don't come back until Monday morning, and they get a bill in the mail for Sunday morning, and we're going to have some complaints at the city, and I don't know where that, what this council's going to do with those complaints.
Well, we hand them an ordinance and says, "Snow must be removed off your sidewalk after 36 hours." It doesn't matter whether they're gone away or not gone away, that's their problem. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. And besides, we're doing it for safety, not to make it look good or not to make somebody feel better. It's a strict safety issue.
Well, I just think we would not be in a position in this town with so many people leaving on a Thursday or Friday morning, plus the Monday through Friday. There are many, many procedures we have that are strictly work hours, strictly managed by work hours.
It's unfortunate, but then you better rewrite the regulations, because the ordinance says 36 hours, okay? And Howard can determine when the snowfalls are over with, that's fine. Then the 30, it's real simple to put 36 hours on your clock and go to work, okay? It doesn't matter what day it is, because how are you going to feel if we don't do it on Sundays and we get three people that slipped and fell on Sunday and we've got big issues? Guess who gets that? The homeowners pay the penalties.
Okay. So Barb, your original comment was that you felt we should rebid, so are you saying now that you think we should rebid, and do you want to include anything different in the bid, or?
I think we should maintain the original bid, and the bidders can bid on the original bid. I do not, or original request for proposals. I think we still have to maintain the fact that we're open Monday through Friday. Weekends are very difficult in this town.
People nowadays are 24/7.
Barb, if that's your position, I think then we could actually just continue with the current bid, because Southwest just had their bid specs, the same ones, and they just chose not to follow them. So it's technically a bad bid.
But you want to go with the second one?
It was, I think it was Four Seasons that had the bid that actually responded to the request that we sent out, and Southwest was given the same exact specs, and they just didn't respond to them. So what you're saying, I think effectively, could be the same, we wouldn't need to go for rebid in that instance. And I think I would agree with Barb to not...
We'll just follow the rules and take a second bid, even though it's higher?
I would agree to not rebid.
I would agree to rebid it, because I know probably, you know, people are going to come back and look at the dollars and cents.
Okay. Ken and Tom would like some direction so we can give staff whether or not we should rebid the project, if we want to make any changes, or if we should stay with the bids that have been received because of the bid specs.
Not rebid.
No, I don't think we should rebid it.
All right, the consensus is not to rebid. So this will be on for action.
You guys remember, you tell the people they're charging them a lot more.
We thank you for your input, Mike.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is a motion is needed to go into closed session, so if someone, please, would read the language here and make that motion, that would be wonderful.
I will make a motion to go into closed session for Wisconsin Statute 19.81, Paire and 1, Paire et E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting of other specified public businesses, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, library block projects.
Is there a second? We have a second, by Ken.
Hey, guys, I can't hear.
We'll vote.
No?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.